I don't want to rush you, just pointing out it's seven o'clock.
Yes, we are ready to go. I have started the recording.
All right, thanks, Sean. Okay, welcome to Design Review Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. So first up here is we're going to make sure we have the commissioners present will establish the quorum. So I will call the role. Jude Carrick?
Here.
Sam Harding?
Here.
Michael Ma?
Here.
And I believe David Blockus is absent. David, are you here? Okay, not extending, and Frank Bishop. So we have four of the five commissioners, so we have a, we have a quorum to proceed for the, for the evening. First item on the agenda is public comments, not on the agenda. Sean, has anyone asked to speak on a comment or comment on an item that's not on tonight's agenda?
Uh, no, no individual has indicated they would like to speak regarding an item not, not on the agenda unless there was someone tonight available that's not advised us.
All right, hearing none, I'll close that section of the meeting. We'll move on to items for consideration and action. First item is the consent, consent calendar. We have one item on the calendar tonight. It's the Design Review Commission. Minutes from the meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Read the minutes. Has anyone else read the minutes and like to make a motion to approve them or change them?
Move that we approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. So I'll call the roll. Please say aye if you approve. Jude Carrick?
Aye.
Thanks. Sam Harding?
Aye.
Michael Ma?
Aye.
And Frank Bishop, aye. So minutes accepted. Okay, down to the discussion section here, number two. And SC twenty-one zero 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 nine and sixty-six Lyle Street. So with that, before we begin on this one, I've got to add this new item to my list here. Do we have any ex parte communications on this project? Jude?
None for me. Frank?
Thank you. Sam?
None for me.
Thank you. Michael?
None for me.
Thank you. And Frank has none either. So with that, I believe this one's yours, Sean. So do you have a staff's report, please, on the, on the project for us? Sean? All right, Sean, are you there?
I am back. Sorry, I muted.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. Apologize for that delay. The project before you tonight is a design review application for a new two-story house. The project includes one thousand eight hundred and forty-seven at the first story, one thousand three hundred and thirteen at the second story. Let me try to get the slide to move. This slide provides a rendering that is, this is provided in, in the package before you. And this is a two-story home. The subject property is located at the corner of Gabalon and Lyle Street. The neighborhood is considered to be a diverse character neighborhood. The immediate neighborhood context is comprised of eight single-family homes and three multifamily homes. Description is provided in the report. The property is considered a narrow property. It is sixty-four feet wide, where the standard width on a corner lot is ninety feet. And as a result, it does permit a reduced setback on the interior side, which is a ten percent of the average lot width, which is six point four feet. And then in addition, a second story setback will be thirteen point nine feet. The exterior site setback is allowed to be reduced from the standard twenty-foot setback to twenty percent of the width, or twelve point eight feet. Generally, the project does comply with the standards. Staff would like to note, and there is, in the design, we do have a daylight plane, or not daylight plane, but a light well that is located in an exterior site property line. This is not permitted under chapter fourteen, under chapter, chapter fourteen point zero six one one zero zoning code. The applicant will address this in their, in their discussion or presentation. Provide some alternatives hopefully to resolve this issue for you. Otherwise, a, a light well in a side yard setback or exterior side or setback would require variance. And if a solution isn't found, then we would need to come back with this item, either as a variance item or with a revision showing the new location of the, of the light wells, if necessary. The new residence is proposing a contemporary inspired architectural design with a flat roof, simple, modern forms. Overall, while the highest house is designed to be consistent with the neighborhood by having these horizontal forms along the first and second story, which is consistent with the forms found in the immediate neighborhood. Staff, as conveyed in the report, is concerned with the ten-foot-tall first-floor wall plates and nine-foot-tall second-story wall plates. Traditionally, it's conceived to be a greater perception of bulk and scale with the overall lower scale found in the immediate neighborhood context. Furthermore, staff had concerns regarding the exterior side, the taller two-story wall plate or vertical wall planes along the exterior side of the building. As the commission is aware, the design guidelines do recommend avoiding two-story tall wall planes. Staff does note that there are proposed screening trees to address those issues, but staff does believe that, that it may not sufficiently address the issue of the vertical wall plane at that location. Staff does provide a, a direction and comments in the staff report regarding this in greater detail. This provides the rear elevation of the structure at the top and the interior elevation. Staff would note the interior elevation facing the side yard is proposing four foot six plate heights, which traditionally with the commission is a taller plate height that does not typically contribute to overall privacy impacts neighboring properties. In regards to the greater context, as I was talking about scale, this is, this conveys the overall neighborhood context in regards to diagrams. As I kind of stated, the, the, the neighborhood has traditionally about seven homes that have eight-foot plates. With the exception of one, a single-family home at one eighty-one Lyle Street that does have a nine-to-ten-foot plate at, at the particular site, which however, they do minimize perception of scale with more simple gable and hip roof forms and horizontal eve lines and more rustic materials than proposed for this project. Furthermore, there are three properties at one twenty-eight, one thirty-four Lyle Street, and there is one property at one forty Lyle and one at four forty-five Gabalon. And these are this property here and these properties over here that are multifamily developed properties. This particular site was more recently developed in the last few years or recently approved by council to be a ten-foot, a structure with ten-foot-tall plate heights at the first story with nine-foot plate heights at the second story. This provides a photo simulated drawing that was presented to council, and this is how it's perceived here. And then these are, this is the actual elevation drawings from the plan set that reflects the ten-foot plate heights and nine-foot second-story plate heights. You know, in reviewing, the neighborhood staff believe that multifamily designs could potentially, you know, minimize the perception of bulk due to the eve lines that are being, eve lines being portrayed horizontally for the structure and the second story being recessed. However, staff does acknowledge that this structure does introduce for the second time, a taller plate height in the neighborhood of ten-foot-tall first-story wall plate heights and nine-foot second-story wall plates. And staff seeks the commission's direction in, in regards to whether the proposed house at one sixty-six Lyle Street is compatible with the overall scale bulk of the neighborhood, which is primarily a lower eight-to-nine-foot plate. A landscape plan is provided on sheet L one. And a discussion in the staff report provides a more detailed discussion of the overall landscaping and trees. Staff would like to note that due to the removal of trees, four trees, TR one, TR two, TR three, and TR four, staffers are recommending condition number five that requires a landscape plan be revised to add three additional twenty-four-inch box or thirty-six-inch box category one trees and one additional category three tree on the site to replace those trees, consistent with typical direction from, from staff. This concludes the staff's presentation. Unless there are any questions, thank you.
Okay, Sean, thank you. So I'm sure there'll be some questions, but let's see. Jude, I'll just go through the, the role here. Did you have any questions for Sean?
Well, following up on my questions to Sean. Sean, I still am concerned about the daylight plane interpretation on the corner. This allows, you know, an exceptionally tall wall in violation what I deem to be the second-story setback requirement that the first floor setback requirement. So I, I think, once again, that is an area that is subject to further review. And I think some of these other issues that are discussed in the staff report are affected by the ability for them to build a taller wall on that corner. So can you talk us through that daylight plane on this corner?
Sure. So the single-family R one to ten district standards stipulate that daylight plane is applicable to second-story side yard setbacks. Traditionally, the planning division has interpreted or applied that as applying to setbacks as conveyed in the R one-ten that have second-story setbacks. If we look at table A under fourteen zero six zero eight zero, the interior side yard is the only side yard that is showing second-story setbacks of seventeen and a half feet. The exterior side yard and the rear and the front have broad setbacks, not specifically called out as second-story setbacks. And traditionally, we've only applied daylight plane for corner properties on the interior side only. Traditionally, the reasoning behind that is the exterior site setback is a, is a twenty-foot setback, and that is greater than the standard setback of seventeen and a half feet. Traditionally, that does not provide or create additional bulk perception for neighbors, and it complies overall generally with the daylight plane. In this case, we have a narrow lot and the, or this does not specifically address the issue of a narrow lot and the effect of narrowness in regards to the reduction of this, of the overall setback on a side. The staff does still believe that, that the second-story daylight plane requirement doesn't apply to the exterior side yard.
Even though the required setback is still twelve, twelve point four feet, whether it's first or second story, it is a setback, correct?
Correct. There is a setback for this. There is a broad setback that applies to the first and second story. But the design, the section fourteen oh six zero eight zero does not call it out as a second story. We do have design guidelines that do address issues of bulk and scale that can be utilized to, to address issues of scale bulk on the right side of the structure, which staff highlighted in the report were concerns for staff regarding the overall scale on the right side and the overall scale of the overall structure due to the ten-foot first story place and the second story nine-foot plates.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thanks, Jude. Sam, any questions?
Yeah, I do. I notice, I know that we can't question ADUs in terms of approval, but my question is, the, there is an ADU there, and it wasn't clear to me where their utility hookups were. There was a, there's a large hole at the side of the, of the property that we're looking at tonight, but is there a relationship in terms of gas, electric, water, sewer for an existing ADU that comes under our provisions in looking at the, at the larger structure?
So ADU application, so this, the specific ADU on the site is already approved by another planner earlier in the year. So it's already been approved by staff prior to this application. The applicants themselves submitted an application for an ADU first. It went through the ADU permit process, was approved ministerially, and then after they received approval, and I believe they built the structure, then they applied for the design review application for the structure. In a particular case where the structure wasn't built and it was an application that was somewhat being submitted concurrently with an application, no, the Design Review Commission does not have the ability to provide input or comments. They could provide a general advice to staff that, that may raise issues that may, you may need to look at, but the overall permit is a ministerial permit that's approved by, by the community development director or staff.
So there's no, there's no, I don't see any notation about where the various hookups are. So is that, that's all done ministerially?
So, so the hookups aren't shown on the plans because the structure is, is already there. It's already been previously approved. So traditionally, when it comes to ADUs and ADU applications, we do require they show the location of utility connections. So they have to show the location of, of electrical and gas and sewer and water. ADUs can share electricity and overall gas lines with the main house, but they cannot share sewer lines. The sewer, the sewer connection to the lateral has to be separate from the main house. And so this ADU has been designed to have a separate connection to the main sewer lateral. That is the only restriction due to concerns regarding having a commonly shared sewer connection may result in potential common backups between the main house and an ADU. So we require separate connections.
And they, just one more question. Can the ADU and the principal house have different locations, meaning different street locations for their sewers?
The ADU regulations don't, don't stipulate that, don't stipulate that they cannot have a second address. Traditionally, I, I believe for the building division and for fire department, they assign, they assign it like a, like a sub-number to the address. So usually, if it's one sixty-six Lyle, then it'll be one sixty-six A Lyle. So that, that fire trucks or police, when they're servicing the site, know to, to service the site from the front and to come into the back, and they're aware that there's actually an ADU on the site. If they were assigning it to the side, it's a little bit more problematic because it may result in delays in, in service from a police and fire. So traditionally, it's not been done, but there's nothing to prevent them from doing that potentially.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Sam, thanks. Michael, any questions?
Yeah, I have some, Sean, I have some quick question. You mentioned that you will ask additional planting on this application with some category tree. Can you provide a little more detail? Do you ask them to, I mean, right now, the plan doesn't show any, right? It's just additional comments from you. And how many well locations? Or it's not, not determined yet from the location?
Um, one second, sorry. So what I, so it's a condition of approval that's in the staff report, and what staff requested that they add three additional twenty-four-inch or thirty-six-inch boxes and one additional category three on the site. It does specify that the applicant should add two of the category, category one or twos in the front yard. One category one or two anywhere on the site and one category three tree anywhere on the site. But we do want a replacement of the trees that are lost on the front yard. Unless the commission believes that there should be revision to that condition, and then we can always revise that condition for you.
All right, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Sean.
All right. Thanks, Michael. Frank here. No questions at this point. I, I may have one a little further down the line, so. Okay, so let's move on to have the owner architect here, their present, if they could make a presentation, please, on the project.
Hi, thank you so much. This is Manju, one of the owners. And I would request either Rob or Sean to present this, please, for the presentation. There it is. Thank you, everybody, for coming down here, and thank you for giving us a chance to talk. Thanks to all the members of this team and all the commissioners. If you can go to the next slide. Rob?
Could you speak up a little louder, please?
Yes, can you hear me okay now?
You were kind of soft at the beginning, so yes, this is better. Thank you.
Sure. So, hi. So we are a family of five that includes fourteen-year-old Drew, eight-year-old Tanisha, Navneet, and myself, Manju, and, and our three-and-a-half-year-old dog, Snowy. We have been residents of this area for a long, long time, we, earlier in Los Altos, and then we moved out to Palo Alto. And since last two years, we've been back to Los Altos, and we've moved here almost like two years ago. The whole, the home that is the project, which is one six-six Lyle, is nineteen forty-nine built. This is very, very old. We're not even getting any fire insurance on it, but we are very excited that we are about to build a new home there. If you can go to the next slide, I'll take you through the journey of the home. So we started designing this house in February of this year, which is early this year, and we've come a long way. Thanks to Guido and Sean, who've been guiding us throughout and our project. We've gone through a lot of multiple iterations of designs and addressed all the city commons. This being a very narrow and corner lot, there were not very many design options, but we tried our best with our architect. We even have a very, very large setback, like about seventeen and a half on one of the sites, which is not really usual. But here we are finally at a DRC meeting after almost eleven months of going back and forth on our designs. If you can go to the next slide, I would like to appreciate all the neighborhood support that we have, all the, the two front neighbors that we have on one six five at April and Family, the one seven five Lyle Street right in front of us, Richard and Family, one seven four, adjacent to us, which is Heather and Family, and four four Gabland, which is behind our property, Brenda. Brenda is actually here on the, on this meeting as well, along with our other Los Altos residents to support this project. They fully hundred percent support this project as is, and we are very lucky and thankful to have them. And I'll have Navneet, if you have something else to say.
Yeah. Thank you so much. Once again, Commissioners, thanks for giving us the opportunity to present here today. Lived in Los Altos since two thousand and eleven, and very, very lucky and proud to be living in this community. What I would like to talk about, Rob, if you can go to the next slide, is we have provided letters of support from several of the community members, immediate neighbors that Manju just talked about. These are our immediate neighbors right across the street, two of the immediate neighbors right across the street, the immediate neighbor to the right of us, and, and Brendan, who is behind us, and she's gonna be talking to Rob. She's right here. What I would like to do is, Rob, if you don't mind, go to the next couple of slides, but I'd like to touch on the two or three topics that came up and that came up in the staff discussion along with the commissioners' questions. The first topic I would like to talk about is quickly the, the light well issue that was just brought to us lately today, just a little bit ago this evening. And I'm thankful that Sean, Sean, that you can be head up on the issue we brought up about the, about the light well, and we are willing to work with staff on relocating, eliminating that, eliminating that light well from the sides, from the side setback encroachment, and putting it into two parts, one in the front setback and one in the rear setback under, to be approved by, to be supported by the staff and discuss with them as a part of the process, a condition of approval, and then, of course, at the director approval level. The other thing I would, the other two issues I would like to talk about quickly is the daylight plane issue. Of course, we have worked on it, this project for eleven months and tried to interpret with staff support and number of times, and this being an extremely challenging site for two reasons, one being corner lot and the second being a narrow lot, put a lot of pressure on the site, and like we talked about, we have seventeen and a half feet setback on the second story on the neighbor's side, fully taking into account the privacy as well as the daylight plane issues, if any, to fully address and go beyond what typically is there to address any such concerns. And we believe we, we do conform with the requirements of any daylight plane as per the current code and law in Los Altos on the, on the street side as it stands. The last thing I would like quickly to talk about is the ADU hookups. So of course, the ADU project. So we lived in the, that nineteen forty-nine built house. It was in really bad shape. I really struggled with getting fire insurance and and our goal was, me and my kids and us, all of us living there together in that house was, was, was extremely big challenge. I mean, and, and we built the ADU so that we can move in it as quickly as possible and build this beautiful house and, and move back in. And we, my, my son is in high school. He's finishing ninth grade soon, and we would like to build this house before he goes to, you know, like, hopefully, we can build it next year and he get to spend two years in this, in this new house before he goes off to college. So the ADU, of course, was, of course, fully permitted, went to Los Altos, and I'm happy to take any questions about hookup, how it hooks up a truck. I'm fully up to speed on all electrical. It has a separate electric connection. The, the sewer connection is shared with the main house as per the, as per the city of Los Altos code and everything else with respect to public works, et cetera. So that's it for me. Just wanted to answer some of the questions that came up, and I will pass on to Rob and his team.
Awesome. Thank you. I mean, yeah, one thing to add is, yeah, there is a separate, you know, property line or sewer cleanout specifically for the ADU, as Sean mentioned, to avoid any sort of common shared backup that might, that might occur. But I'm gonna go back just a couple of slides so I can, so I can, I was trying to keep up with you, Navneet, as you were, as you were talking, but I'm Rob. I'm the Director of Operations for Libio. We were brought into this project at the very conception as a design build contractor. We worked really closely with the Arons. They've been an absolute pleasure to work with. We've worked closely with the community members, the neighbors. And a very special thank you to Los Altos staff, especially Guido and Sean, and of course, Commissioners here this evening. So thank you for that. This location sitting in both diverse character neighborhood as well as being on a narrow corner lot presented many challenges, right? The surrounding neighborhood consists of both single-family homes to the north and the west as represented by two-ten Marvin Ave in the image here, and also multifamily to the south and the east as represented by one forty Lyle Street in the image here. And both are relatively recently approved projects. You know, we're proud today to present to you a, a design that we feel both fits in well with the diverse neighborhood and brings out the best characteristics of the surrounding homes that are, that are currently here. As a, as a kind of a bird's eye view here, the new home was designed to sit primarily in the existing house footprint. The lot itself, as Sean had mentioned, is considered narrow in the zoning code. And the second story was positioned in an asymmetric form to both support the modern architecture while also preserving the privacy of the adjacent neighbor at one seven four Lyle. We're also proposing to add additional trees along the side and the rear property lines to improve the privacy protection that's currently there. As for the front facade, it's comprised of smooth acrylic stucco, glazing, and extensive use of siding which serves to emulate and tie in the largely wood siding finish that is currently present in that neighborhood. Mini ranch-style homes. The entry is highlighted with a cantilevered second story, which presents in a dramatic yet simple and modern art, is architecture and design. And the glazing here on the front facade serves to break up the massing and brings in the natural light that the Arons were looking for into that second story. While also the metal frame of the window and the railings complement one another and highlight the modern aesthetics of the building design that we were hoping to achieve on this. As for kind of the connection with the surrounding neighborhood, this home is at the intersection of not just Gabalon and Lyle, but also serves as an intersection between the multifamily and the single-family in this Los Altos community, acting as a bridge of sorts between the two densities. The massing of the second story being offset complements both the predominantly ranch-style, single-family to the northwest while fitting in scale with the multifamily to its southeast. The predominant intersection of Lyle and Gabalon will be balanced in scale with one forty Lyle projecting slightly above the subject property that we're discussing here this evening in both second-story plate height as well as building height. It's important to our clients to preserve as much privacy as possible between their home and the to-be constructed multifamily, which is going to be built across the street. The use of landscaping and preserving the front door on Lyle to contrast that of the new development across the street offers a buffer between the higher density that's going to be built there and the single-family that sits behind my client's house. This project being designed build has, has incorporated structural input from the very beginning and onset, with one of the primary drivers being that the home is going to be built using one hundred percent recyclable steel, which is, of course, is also non-combustible. As a result, we're able to be on the cutting edge of residential green building and sustainable design. The home will have a continuous exterior rigid foam insulation as well to create an extremely tight envelope. That being said, we're extremely excited to be bringing this innovative, unique, and loving home to life in Los Altos, and we thank Sean and Commissioners for giving us this opportunity. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any other people to speak on behalf of the project from the owner, architect or design build firm? We covered everyone?
We're done. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. So from the commissioners, does anyone have a question for the owner, architect, design, build firm? Go back to the top of the list, Jude.
Let me unmute there. Sorry. Yeah, actually, based on the, first of all, for the architect, based on the last slide, you showed EPE siding. Is that correct? On sheet A seven point zero zero one, you have the same image with cement, cement board siding?
Oh, yes. As we are finalizing the materials, I think it has changed to go to EPE siding, which I think is very good looking. We've used it in our ADU recently, getting a lot of compliments from the neighborhood. And that's what we have decided to use for the main house as well.
Okay. So what we, what we look at and approve is what is on the drawings, not things changing. So.
I think it might have been an oversight and we are happy to have it as a condition of approval that the final siding material that will be used would be EPE siding. We would appreciate if staff, if the commissioners would consider that. Thank you.
And I have, I'm curious, you have an eleven foot six ceiling height in the basement on an exceptionally narrow lot. What is your storing requirements and why do you have such a deep basement?
I believe that the goal, the design goal for us, and Rob, maybe you can chime in a little bit, has been to have ten feet ceiling heights in the basement, not, not eleven feet, six inches. If I don't know at this moment of what is the gap and why it would say eleven feet, six inches. But whatever the gap might be, we are happy to correct it. We do not seek more than ten feet. Happy to again have this as a condition of approval to limit the ceiling heights and the excavation to be limited to support only ten feet ceiling heights.
All, all your sections and all your elevation show eleven foot six.
I, again, I'm speaking for probably an architect firm here. And what I would say is that in the big project, there might have been a discussion about it, but we had revised and we're thinking only ten feet ceiling heights. And they're happy to address this. And building set submittal that we would be doing once upon after their boot.
Thank you.
All right. Good questions, Jude. Sam, any questions for the owner?
Question I think for Rob. You made a comparison between this house and one on Marvin. And what was the, I missed, I guess, the kind of the connection?
Primarily due to the timing at which the applications were approved. This being and also the fact that it is, has a modern aesthetic, which is fairly unique to the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. Because not in the same neighborhood. Next to them, I guess, is. But, okay, I just didn't understand what you, what the reasoning behind that was.
That house is only four houses down from our house and it is a beautiful modern house. It has a ten, a ten feet first story, ten feet plate height. And I believe nine and a half on the second story. And this is very appealing to us. It was definitely a very motivational design for our modern design as well, which is just four houses down the line for us.
Right. Down the bike, bike trail.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Take our dog there all the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sam. Michael, any questions?
Yes. Yes, I do. I do have question for the architect or Rob or the designer. Okay. So my question, first question is that I saw the survey, the spot elevation, which is around two hundred, you know, one ninety nine, two hundred, two oh one. But the, on the architectural elevation is reference another number point, you know, it starts with the first finish floor, negative ninety nine. So how does that tie into the real elevation from the civil drawing or the survey? Why are the two number different system on the elevation, the real elevation?
Yeah, give me one moment. Let me pull up the topographic survey real quick so I can reference the elevation you're referring to. Okay. So the, per the civil drawings that I am looking at right now.
SU dash one, yeah, the civil drawing, I mean, the topographic survey, SU dash one. Or we can go back to C dash one, the finished floor is two oh one point five for the new house.
Let me go to C, let me go back to C one. I saw the elevation marker that you had pointed out in the topographic survey. On the civil drawings, it shows two oh one point five for the finished floor of the new home. And that will be, if the, I can flip over to the architectural drawings, but that will be the proposed finished floor elevation that we are going to be proceeding forward with in the design.
Yeah, my question is like how your, your elevation marker on the, you know, on the section or elevation use negative ninety nine for the first finish floor. I mean, how, who, where's that coming from? I just cannot figure out where that ninety, negative ninety nine coming from.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we had moved. So I think it is a drafting error which is showing up. It's coming from probably one of the early revisions that we had worked on. And I really believe it is coming from a previous work that we had done. And that's where the drafting error is coming from, of course, needs to be rectified. Apologize for the mistake, the previous civil form that we had worked with. I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, no, no problem. The reason I'm putting it up is that the, the daylight plan, I mean, need to be actually derived from the average natural gray. And then the gray is referenced by the, nature gray is usually referenced by the survey. That's why I got this all mixed up and confused and how I just cannot figure out. So that's one. And then the, let me see, I have another question. I noticed that the, on the material you mentioned, this is a modern, of course, contemporary design with the metal windows. Can you provide more information about metal window? Why is it aluminum window, metal window and what brand, what line?
It will likely be an aluminum Milgard product, but it will definitely be aluminum. It's just a function of what brand we're going to be going with at this point.
Okay, okay. Yeah. So that need to be more specific. And then see the basement, the corner basement at the street corner where the Lyle corner close to that tree number eleven, pine tree, nineteen inch. I noticed on the obverse report, it says something about fifteen feet from the tree, the basement. But I, even though there's no dimension, but I feel that that one has been adjusted or moved closer. So I just want to bring that something up. Is it just Mike? Because it is no dimension, it's hard to tell. So on the obverse report, page seven, that diagram, the tree to the corner of that basement, Lyle. It seems like enough, but not a lot further away from the tree than the drawing shows. I just want to point out, maybe it's just a visual, you know, difference or something between the sketch and the drawing.
Commissioner, if I may, if I may follow up on that, the tree we're talking about is along Gabilan Street, right?
Yes, yes, that's, that's a pine tree, nineteen inch or twenty inch pine tree.
Right. What's the question about the tree?
The obverse report, page seven, it shows that the partial plant that Lyle corner in relation to that tree. And then on the obverse report, page seven, it also mentioned that the basement cut out to fifteen feet from the tree where is possible. And I don't know, I just want to make sure that the basement, there's no dimension right now, show on the drawing, the basement plan, how far that corner from the tree is. I just want to make sure it's fifteen feet because there's no dimension.
Yeah, Rob, is it possible or to bring up a visual, the slide, just the site plan, the front, the front elevation itself will show it?
Even, even though I know that basement, we still, we may still have some further changes or variance. But I just want to point it out. That's, that's all I want. Yeah.
Yeah. So that tree that you're talking about, the pine trees at the corner of the property, it's actually
Yes.
And it is, it is, the, the location of the existing building footprint remains exactly the same. The closest point in the current house will be, will be the closest point in the new house. In, once the new house is built, so the distance between the pine tree and the current tree location will remain exactly the same. And so that's what, that's what I can tell you just, just as a, you know, from what I can gather right now.
Okay.
And we plan on protecting that tree, keeping that tree. Basically, there's no plan to remove that.
The condition will improve as well. Once the light well has been modified.
Yeah.
Based on the lapse of, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Right. And the light, like we already talked about, that based on staff's finding today that light well needs to be moved from the current location, will be moved in the, in the front setback. And we can make sure that it is okay with the arborist and at the director level.
Okay. 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 All right. Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. I had questions around the light well myself, but I guess that will be addressed to the, between the staff or maybe it'll come up in the discussion with the, with the commissioners, but I'll let that set right now. So I guess we'll move on to, Sean, do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on the, on the project this evening?
I have not received, is, is there any member of the public who would like to speak regarding the project? I did not receive.
I would like to, I didn't know if there was a formal process, but if I may.
Who's speaking?
My name is Gorav Jain. I'm a Los Altos resident.
Could, could you state your name and address?
Sure. Sorry. My name is Gorav Jain. I live in, on Panchita Way. I drive by this area all the time. I'm, I'm very familiar with also the firm. And I'd like to voice a few points of support for the project.
Please proceed.
Yeah. So I just want to say that I'm a really big fan of this design firm and these builders. I particularly, I've been very following them for a number of years and seeing the designs and seeing how they've been improving the Los Altos landscape with their various projects. I particularly want to also show some very strong support for their use of steel. I've learned more and more about their process over there and how environmentally friendly that process is. And I've become definitely a convert that we definitely should be pushing more for the use of steel. And also, as I mentioned, I do drive by that area every day, dropping my kids off to school. And I'm familiar with a little of that area. And I would like to say that when I see some of the landscaping that they're proposing over there, I think it would be a really great improvement to the neighborhood and I look forward to the project going forward as is.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Sean, is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Brendan Shepherd. I'd like to speak up in support of the project.
Okay, please proceed. Could you give us your address, please?
Yes, I'm, I'm the address at four four five Gabby Land Street. Thank you. We live directly, like directly next door to this project and this family. And we have become close to them just because of proximity. So they're just delightful neighbors, but I'd also like to say that there's a lot of construction that we've been living next door to. It's my experience that this family has been extremely polite and thoughtful. The demolition was meticulous and almost noiseless. The hours were respected. It all happened very efficiently and very quickly. And also the trucks coming in and then the neighbors coming in have just worked like clockwork. It just, it's gone really well. When you live right next door to construction, you're really concerned. And I just want to share that it is not once been a problem for us. And I'm thrilled to see the plans for the home. It's going to be a big improvement for the home. It is a very tough corner. I would be in support of additional privacy. Is there anything else I can say or do to help?
That's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Sean, do we have anyone else this evening?
No, I do not have a list. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak on this item?
Sure. Hi, my name is Juwi Maru. I am a resident of Los Altos. And I want to show support for this project. I've known the family for many years. And I do wish Drew gets to spend as much time as he can in his new and gorgeous home. I have great respect for the family and they are also, they, you know, just as a, they've been in the community for many years and the design is modern, nice, and I think they've taken great advantage of, you know, that lot, which is so rectangular. So it would be great if they get to do what they wish. Sure. My name is Juwi, that is spelled as J U I. My last name is Maru. That is M A R U.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Sean, other, other participants from the public?
The only other party, I, I don't know if it's a DeeDee Landy, did you wish to speak on the item?
It is part of the design.
Okay. No, I do not have any additional speakers unless there is anyone who would like to speak.
Okay. All right. Well, thanks, Sean. Were the comments were all positive? I don't think there's any need for rebuttal from the owners. Did the owners want to say anything before I, I close this section of the meeting?
No, thank you so much for the thoughtful consideration, guys. I really appreciate everybody's time here. The community members as well as the commissioners, the staff. And I acknowledge some of the gaps that are there. We are committed to working with the staff to address each and every issue meticulously and resolving them timely as a part of the building process with them. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Then we'll close the public comment section for this particular project. And we'll open the discussion now amongst the, amongst the commissioners. So again, just work, at least working through the list I'm using now. Jude, did you want to open up the discussion?
Sure. Well, I think I've already stated a few areas of concern. One, the depth of the basement will have a significant impact on the neighbor at one seventy four Lyle Street. I don't know if they're aware of that. I don't know if they have any landscaping along that line. It seems that the, all the trees that are significant in that area are being removed. I don't know if there's any significant trees on one seven four Lyle, but it would be good to know what the impact of a super deep basement, and I call it super deep because it is super deep. At eleven, it's, the excavation will be over fourteen feet below grade by the time you're getting the foundation and the drainage in. So I think we need further information on that. I am concerned, first of all, I, I live in the neighborhood. I am exclude, I'm not, I'm not excluded due to my proximity. But I do walk the, the connection between Marvin and Lyle on a daily basis. I walk by this corner every day. I'm very familiar with the situation. I, I think it's an unfair comparison. There's no, there's no relevance to the home at Marvin. That lot is in a different neighborhood. Those are exceptionally large lots at over an acre. So I appreciate the architecture and there's, this is no comment on the architecture. The architecture is wonderful. But it's more about the scale and the appropriateness of that home in that neighborhood. This lot, as well as all other lots on Lyle, excluding the multifamily lots, are exceptionally narrow. And this home, if it's allowed to be built in its current configuration with the plate heights, is going to is gonna have a dramatic impact on that corner. So um at a minimum, I would want to see the plate heights reduced to what we typically see uh on most of our homes, even on larger lots, we're looking at nine foot first floor plates, eight and a half on second. Um, I would also want the applicant to rethink the material and fenestration on the corner side. Uh, I think that a s- that uh two-story wall is pretty significant, especially since there's no break due to not having a daylight plane come into play. Um, so there's, there's, those are my main areas of concern. Um, and how also the light well change will affect the plan in the yard. So to me, I would want to see those answer, those questions addressed. And I would also want to see more consistency in the plans that are in front of us. It's very frustrating to see different information and materials um called out through the plans, and I I think we need to give the applicant one more chance at coming back with a clear and concise package so we can review it uh and approve something that's consistent on paper.
Okay, uh, anything else, Jude?
Nope.
Okay, I I agree with you, by the way, I'm just last on the list here.
By the way, it's uh toward the architect, it's very, there there's a couple of other architects on this board that love plans that are in the same orientation. So when your civil engineering and your architecture and your landscape are in different orientation, it's very frustrating to follow, so just uh yeah, I just want to keep that in mind, uh, you know, it's, it's uh, it's hard for us to follow and we're in the profession.
I I think that's a accurate observation, thank, thank you. Okay, Sam?
No, I made my comments earlier, um.
Okay, alright, thank, thanks for that, Michael?
Yeah, my comments are, yes, yes, my comments are very similar to um or the commissioner. Um, so I like the the architecture, uh the style, I mean, that that's wonderful, the the use of mixed of a different material in in the, you know, to uh for that, this contemporary style. But the concern is about the, especially the corner smaller lot, to be more careful on the the height and bulk. You know, because of visibility, and um that that bring the concern about the the visibility. Uh, and I know that the, I I'm hoping that next time when you come back, the the color rendering could be more realistic, I know you guys should try to show more more trees and more greenery, you know, on both sides of the the uh the house, especially along along that this uh the street si- side street yard. But realistically, there's only a couple of tree in the front, um, you know, gonna be remain, and then there is gonna be new, smaller new tree be planted, so I'm hoping that next time, you know, the rendering could be more realistic. Um, you know, symptom, the the plate height need to be reduced. Um, let me see, the the window, the 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 material need to be more specific uh detail. Um, the light well, okay, so back to onto the light well. Um, I know that you guys may revise the light well, because it's not um in in the, you know, with the uh you know, meeting the requirements. Um, but once you eliminate the light well or relocated, that the the basement floor plan may have to change, because there's a base, uh, there's a a bedroom in the basement, which you need to egress, so something that need to be, you know, considered, I know you guys probably gonna be think about, you know, would you know, we think about that, all the two meter requirement already, that's just kind of reminder. Um, yeah, so that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, uh, thanks, Michael, so I'm pretty much in align with with everyone else, uh given how narrow the lot is and the the plate heights that have been proposed, I I think that really needs to be rethought, and I think Jude made some good recommendations uh on the height as far as that goes. Uh, windows, we typically do see the brand, and we all know the brands and the products that are out there, so being specific is important, actually, to us. There are a number of inconsistencies that were pointed out, the Michael did with the uh the survey and the uh uh starting points of the heights that were inconsistent, we talked about the plate uh the trees, that's been gone over already, the light, always my question, and it looks like that's going to get addressed, but it's hard for us to approve uh anything to move projects forward when you move something as major as that, actually during the meeting. And I know that was a, that was a late issue, but you have to realize, we we need to see what's going to be built, I think, there. Final siding material, there were some questions around that too, and that is an awfully deep basement, and digging holes that deep cause all kinds of problems, so I would ask you to look pretty thoughtfully into that, I see very few basements that have ten-foot ceilings or eleven foot, as described in the in the plan. So with that, I think uh all the commissioners were reflecting that maybe a second run-through would be the appropriate thing to do. Uh, but I'll turn this back over to um to the team to see if we have a motion uh out there and a second uh to take this project uh back around for another, another, another turn, so.
Uh, Chair, Chair Bishop, Chair Bishop, before we go into the motion, sorry, I I forgot, I wanna, I wanna add something, uh one more. Uh, I would like to see more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I I would like to see uh more screening along along the side street, you know, with the the landscaping.
I think, yeah, I think that would help too, Michael, given that it's almost like this giant vertical wall, yeah?
Yes, yeah, thank you.
I agree, yeah. Yeah, of course, yeah, thank you, so uh with that, would one of the commissioners uh like to make a motion to see if we can, we can come up with a direction here for the for the project, please?
I'll make a motion, Frank?
Yeah, please, if you'd like to, thank you.
Sure. I would love to, I would love to continue SC twenty-one, yes, zero 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 nine, the project at one six six Lyle Street with the specific direction to the applicant to, one, reduce the first and second story plate heights more inconsist- more inconsistent with what we typically see, nine feet at the first floor, eight and a half at the second floor. I would also want to see a updated plan, uh floor plan and site plan to show how the light well reconfiguration will uh affect the issues at hand. Uh, I would also like the applicant to study the side, corner side elevation uh to give some articulation to the two-story wall, given that we do not have a setback in that plane. Um, I would also want to know uh from the applicant and the applicant's arborist, any impact on the neighbors trees and landscape due to the deep, the the depth of the basement. Um, and in conjunction with that, it would probably be prudent to see a shoring plant, how they're gonna support this basement, exceptionally deep basement at five feet from the uh property line. Um, or whatever dis- dimension it is. And I think that's enough direction, at least for me, is I'm open to any additional direction to staff.
Okay, would anyone like to add to that or second it?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Sam, then we'll uh we'll call the roll uh for continuation of the project, Jude?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And Frank says aye as well, so with that, uh, would like to see the project come back in front of us and address some of the uh, some of the points or all of the points uh that we've discussed here this evening, and we we thank everyone for their time. Okay, moving on to item three. SC twenty-one, zero zero one five, one four three eight Fremont uh Avenue. Before we get the staff report, uh, do we have any expertise communications on this project, Jude?
None.
Thank you, Sam?
None.
Thank you, Michael?
None.
Thank you, and Frank has none either, uh Sean, I believe this is also your project, would you like to brief us on it, please?
Yes, I will, let me just uh share, one second.
Thank you.
Let me move you, sorry, does this every time? Uh, good evening, uh again, uh Chair Bishop and Commissioners, let me try to move this page. Uh, the project before you, designer view application for a first and second story addition, it includes seven hundred and thirteen square feet at the first story, three hundred and forty-eight at the second story. Uh, this slide provides you a rendering, which is part of your design package. Um, uh, the proposed addition at the first story is located uh along the rear of the site, and then this is located of the second story. The struck site is located at the corner of Dallas and Fremont Avenue. Uh, Fremont Avenue i- is the commission's aware, is a busy collector's street with a wide right-of-way with the landscape medium median separating uh this residence from residences across Fremont Avenue. Typically, for properties on Fremont Avenue, they they do have significant setbacks from Fremont Avenue due to the to due to the vehicular traffic on the roadway, and most properties do have frontages oriented towards uh interior streets uh like this property has a frontage towards Dallas Court. Uh, this uh provides the neighborhood context um along Austin Avenue and Dallas Court and along Fremont Avenue. Uh, again, most, as conveyed in the staff report, most of the houses are are single-story or one-story low-scale uh, you know, eight to nine-foot tall plate height structures in the immediate neighborhood context. Um, this uh drawing provides uh a a kind of a highlighted diagram of the locations of the second story and first story. Again, this uh, this uh area here is the location of the second story addition, and then the first story addition is located in this area, this is also conveyed on the, on the plans. Uh, Dallas Court is considered the front of the property for zoning purposes, Fremont is considered an exterior side. Uh, this is located as rear setback, and this is an interior side setback. The property does uh meet uh setback standards, daylight plain, and uh it does not have a basement. Um, the uh applicant is, again, proposing the addition off the rear. Uh, the design does convey upper-story windows, uh the addition of four uh windows along the rear, two of them uh double-panel, uh large windows facing the rear. Uh, the interior side shows the addition of a new window facing the interior side. Uh, consistent with the commission's direction previously, it is a four-foot-six uh plate height, or I'm sorry, four-foot-six sill height, uh which uh staff believes does reduce the perception of overall privacy impacts to side yards. Along the exterior side, uh facing Fremont Avenue, um, i- is the addition of two new uh windows, and um along the backside i- is no substantial change, it does face uh Dallas Court. Um, this drawing does provide, um, again, the location of the windows, it does provide an understanding of the orientation of these windows, we have a window here, here on this side, and in in two locations along the front. The applicant is incorporating uh English uh exist, he is retaining existing evergreen screening trees, is adding eleven new English laurel trees along the interior side and rear property line to provide additional screening. Um, it does have a thirty-five-foot setback uh to the interior side from the nearest adjacent window, a rear setback of twenty-six and a half feet to the nearest window. Staff does believe with the window setbacks and the additional screening and existing screening, it does reduce privacy impacts to neighboring properties. Uh, again, this is part of your uh project plans, uh submital, uh sheet L one uh does again convey uh the landscaping plan for the site. Um, staff does provide a more detailed discussion in the staff report. Um, we do believe it meets the existing uh the city's uh landscape regulations, the street tree guidelines. This concludes staff's presentation, is there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, alright, thank you, Sean, I'm gonna look up the list the other way on this one, Michael, any questions for Sean?
Sorry, I don't have any question.
Oh, okay, sorry to surprise you there, uh Sam, any questions for Sean?
Yeah, uh Sean, my question is that the large uh area between the pavement and the property and they're doing some work both on the pavement and uh sewers uh drainage in front of the house. And uh whose responsibility is that property?
Um, which, let me find the site plan, one second.
Well, on Fremont, I mean, it's a significant from the, from the edge of the new pavement to the 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 wall that's that's the beginning of the property is that um it's just, there's no pavement, there's nothing there, so that's my question, who has the responsibility for maintenance and for uh anything that might happen there?
So, um, typically, the the immediately adjacent property owner is responsible for maintenance, however, the uh maintenance service department does work with homeowners, if um there's a need to either remove trees, um, they do require a tree removal permit from the engineering services department and maintenance service to remove any trees in a public right-of-way. If the applicant was to do any improvements, and that includes a significant re-landscaping or new hardscape or driveway openings, it does require an encroachment permit from the engineering and services department, and so that'll be a separate permit that'll be required, uh what'll happen is if the commission does approve this project and they propose any modification, it'll be routed to the engineering services department, and they will require uh them to review it and provide, the applicant will need to submit uh an encroachment permit.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, Sam, Jude?
Uh, no question.
None.
Okay, thanks, Sam. I'm sorry? Okay?
No, I said.
Has no question?
None, yep.
Are you okay, Sam?
I am. So, Michael?
Okay.
No, you're, it's your, it's your turn, Chair.
And I have no que- and I have no question, so, thank you. Uh, alright, so how about uh the owner, uh architect, it's your opportunity to present uh the project now to the commission, please?
So, Sean, how do I get on?
Uh, you are, you are on now, um.
Okay.
Did you have a presentation, or did you want to just?
Well, uh, maybe a few comments?
Okay.
Uh, I thought Sean did a great job in explaining the project, uh what's there, I think i- if the commissioners have uh the file in front of them, if they can go to sheet uh L one or one point four, it's the landscape drawing.
I can, I can do that for you, one second, sorry.
Who's speaking, by the way?
Uh, I'm the architect, Alan Niketan.
Uh, thanks, Alan.
And uh, it was either I one point four or L one.
Yeah, I'm on a difference.
You're getting there.
Sorry, the capacity of the computer slowed down. So here we go, we can use that.
Yeah, that's fine, uh, yeah, I just wanted to point out that the um where the addition is shown is hash lines and cross uh cross-check lines on there. That area was the only area that we could put the addition in for site planning purposes, it's a, the house is placed on the property askew. And uh that's considered the rear of the property, and I had a twenty-five-foot setback there. And um, and I decided to offset the one-story from the two-story rather than stacking on top, I thought it'd give a nicer presentation to the, to the Fremont Street view. And uh add some interest to the uh, to the overall uh look of the project, if you jump right back to the cover sheet, Sean?
I tune on as a cover sheet, one second.
So, um I think those three perspectives pretty much show, I I tried to show some different views of uh how the massing is on the uh one-story and the two-story, some different views. And I think it pretty much illustrates what uh wh- what the addition looks like, you know, I I did a flattened roof up on top on the second, so I wouldn't exceed the height the height of the existing house, so it has a uh kind of a mansard-type roof up there. And on the lower roof, the lower roof is just uh kind of matches the pitches of the uh of the house itself. It's a very quiet kind of an addition, it's, I know it's a thousand square feet, but uh I think with the massing the way it is, the stacking, the fact that it's in a, in in the rear yard, and the landscape architect put those uh those laurels on the property lines and that that jacaranda there, I think it'll add some privacy to the neighbors, uh their two-story houses there. So, that's my presentation.
Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Over to the commission, uh, Michael, any questions? Over to the commission. Michael, any questions for the architect?
Yes, I have a question. Yeah, you mentioned that you put a flat roof. Because you are, you are concerned that you cannot go over the height limit. But I noticed that you are, the design is pretty far from the high limit, 27 feet. Because the elevation right now to that flat roof. The highest on the addition is 21, 21 and a half only. So I just curious, I mean, if you know that, notice that and it's gonna change your design if that you know, you want to get rid of your flat roof.
I think I just didn't want to exceed the height of the existing house.
I see. Okay.
Not so much to keep it underneath the maximum, but I just didn't want to exceed current height of the, of the two story addition that's over that garage, the two story existing that's over the garage.
Okay, all right, I missed it. All right, that's why I had, thank you.
All right, thanks, Michael. Sam, any questions?
None.
Thank you. Jude, questions for the architect?
No questions.
Okay, Frank has no questions at this point either. So with this, we'll come back to, back to Sean. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak on this project?
One second. No, we do not have anyone. Is there, is there anyone additional that may want to provide comments regarding this project? No.
Okay, hearing then we'll close the section on comments from the public. And then open it to the commission for discussion. Michael, would you initiate the discussion, please?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the design. It's very modest. It's compatible to addition. You know, integrated into the existing house very well. You know, everything is, you know, considered, you know, meeting the other requirement and guidelines. So I'm in support of this, this project.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Michael. Appreciate that. Sam?
Yeah, I like the project as well. I like the, the way that he's arranged the, both the roof and the angles of the second floor. I'm glad that they're not taking out any trees. There's some beautiful big trees there. So I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Jude?
Similar comments. I did visit the site. I was pleased. I peeked over the fence, saw the open space. I walked over to the neighbor's yard at 474. And the new redwoods that are growing there are gonna provide a tremendous amount of screening. And if there were any impact on the neighbors, there's none, given the, the screening already in place. So I'm happy to see that additional screening is going to be add and added. And I think the, the project makes sense as designed.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jude. I think the architect did a great job of blending it into what is there. And I'm in favor of the project as well. So with that, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion, please, on the project?
I'll make the motion for approval of SC 21-00151438 Fremont Avenue. Based on the terms and conditions.
I see. Thanks, Sam. Thanks, Michael, for the second. We'll, we'll call the roll. Jude?
Aye.
Thank you, Sam.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael.
Aye.
Thank you, Michael. Frank, I too. So congratulations. Project approved. We will now move on, I believe, to the last item of the evening. SC 21-0030 1730 Holt Avenue. And before we get the staff report, I'll ask again if we've had any expertise communications. Jude?
None.
Thank you, Sam.
None.
Thank you, Michael.
I just asked only if I could, I've been the only, also I just ask if I can go into the backyard, that's all.
Okay, Michael, thank you. And Frank had none either. So I believe the, is it Joyce that has this project? Is that correct?
Sorry, this is Ja speaking. This is Ja, the associate planner.
Sorry, could you tell us your first name? I haven't met you directly, so.
Yeah, it's Ja, A sounds like ah, so it's Ja speaking.
Ja?
Yes.
Okay, well, welcome. And could you please give us the staff report on 1730 Holt Avenue?
Yes, of course. Good evening, Chair of the Shop and Commissioners. This is Ja, the associate planner. Before you, I'm presenting a design review application at SC 21-0030 for new two story, single family house at 1730 Holt Avenue. The project includes 2,015 square feet at the first story and 9,198 square feet at the second story with a detached 842 square feet ADU. However, although the ADUs plans are included in the packet, but it's not part of our discussion today. From this slide, you can see the rendering of the house viewing from the front yard. The subject site is located on Holt Avenue between Fallen Leisline and Stevens Creek. Staff should mention that although the subject site is close to the Stevens Creek, but it is not located within any special flood hazard zone. This slide provides the characteristics of the immediate neighborhood, including the street pictures, neighborhood context map and the street elevations. The neighborhood is considered as a diverse character neighborhood as defined by the residential guideline. The homes in the immediate neighborhood are a combination of one story and two story houses with two story homes at 1731 Holt Avenue, which is right across the street of the subject site and 1701 Holt Avenue. Properties on Holt Avenue are found share similar front setback patterns with most garages attached to the existing house facing the street in the front yard. With regard to the wall plate heights, most properties have a low scale horizontal eve line with plate heights between eight feet to nine feet. But there are also medium scale plate heights found between nine feet and nine feet six inches at 1710 and 1731 Holt Avenue. Roof forms are a combination of simple and complex roof forms due to some homes renovation in the neighborhood over the years. For the roof pitches, that found there is variation in the roof pitches from four and 12, five 12, and six and 12. But overall, the neighborhood appear to, neighborhood appears present predominantly a moderate to steep roof pitches. Mix of roofing materials are found in the neighborhood, including concrete flat tiles, wood shakes, and composition shingles. Dexterior materials commonly used include stucco and wood siding, stone veneer, and wood trim accents. This slide provides the project site plan and the zoning compliance justification. The new proposed house is outlined in a dash line with the second story crosshatched that appeared to be the great cutter. The subject site is considered also a narrow lot with an average lot width of 64.2 feet. But it should be mentioned that although the subject site has required site setback of 6.42 feet at first story and 13.92 feet at the second story due to the narrow lot. The house still designed to respect the standard site setbacks with greater than 10 foot first story setback and 17.5 foot second story setback in order to minimize the impact to the neighboring property. The house is found overall consistent with the R1-10 zoning district development standards. Additionally, the house is designed at least 20 feet away from the Stevens Creek top of bank in order to meet the guidelines and standards for the land use near the street. With regard to the proposed floor plan, the entry of the house is designed with a project, projected porch. The entryway connects to the dining area with kitchen and a great room. To the left, there are two bedrooms and a staircase to the second story. To the right, it has an office with a half bathroom, one utility room, and a two car garage designed facing the street. And there are also two covered porch connected to the great room and the utility room to the backyard. On the second story, it primarily holds three bedrooms with two bathrooms. The master bedroom and the master bathroom is located to the back side. The architecture of the house is changed from one story traditional, traditional ranch style to a modern farmhouse style. It is designed with a steep roof pitch 5.5 in 12 at the first story and 6 in 12 at the second story that have integrated hipped and gable roof forms with concrete tile roofing material. Steph found the second story massing is generally balanced over the first story because of the integration of gable and hip roof forms, architectural articulation on both first and second stories. A five foot projecting front porch with, with, with wood posts and exposed beams and wood tractors added to the gable garage and the bedroom, the guest bedroom to soften the balcony massing. The plate heights for the both stories are nine foot and one inches, which is fine consistent with our design, residential design guideline. The project is using high quality materials such as the concrete flat roof, tile roof, exterior finish with textured stucco and wood window and door trends, which are integrated into the overall architectural design. Steph found the projects designed to establish own design integrity while incorporating some design elements, materials, and scales found in the neighborhood. And this is the west elevation facing the right side neighbor, neighboring property. And Steph apologized for the wrong notation. Oh, sorry. Yeah, this is the west, excuse me, this is the west elevation facing the right. And the east elevation noted on the plan was in, was not right. So this side elevation continued the same design style and construction materials. And with regard to the privacy, there are two small windows finestrated for a bathroom to the right of the slide. And the, and the and bedroom to the left side. The bathroom sill, window sill height is four feet and six inches. And the bedroom window sill height is five feet, which is considered consistent with the privacy, the, the privacy mitigation design standards. And with further proposed evergreen screening plans, this proposed second story windows align the right elevation that don't appear to create any unreasonable privacy impacts. And this is the east elevation. The second story window sill height varies from three feet to five feet and nine inches. However, because the the neighboring property to the east are currently vacant and also appear to have no or very limited development right. So Steph found the windows have no privacy impact to this site. And this is the rear elevation. Four windows are proposed, including one large three panel window for the primary bedroom, one medium sized window in the bonus area, and two small sized window to the side. The window sill height varies from two feet and six inches to four feet and one inch. Given that the setback from the rear props line to the rear elevation is greater than 78 feet with additional evergreen screening vegetation and the proposed detached ADU, Steph found minimal or no privacy impacts to the rear neighboring property. This slide provides existing tree inventory in the proximity proposed tree removal and tree protection measures. Per the upper's report as provided in attachment B of the agenda report, total of 10 trees are are existing on site, including four protected trees. And all the protected trees will be protected and retained through the construction. And there will be four trees, including two private trees with five inches or less in diameter and two trees with pool structure forms that will be removed. Five additional trees will be planted throughout the site, including two Japanese maple and three eastern red bud trees. This slide provides landscaping plan. A total of three evergreen screening vegetation will be planted. Eight of them are wax myrtle that will reach to 15 feet to 25 feet foot tall and 10 foot to 15 foot wide. That will be planted along the right side of the props line to screen the primary drawing. And one Petersporum Californium will be planted next to the ADU, which will grow up to 20 foot to 40 foot tall and 12 foot to 20 foot wide. And along the rear props line, there will be four tonya screening vegetation reached to 15, 15 foot, 25 foot tall and 10 foot to 15 foot wide. All the screening vegetations will be at least 15 gallon in size. And landscape plan also includes trees, other shrubs and hedges and ground cover throughout the site. Lastly, this slide shows the communicate, the, excuse me, the community outreach. The applicant has installed a billboard on site in early August and also reached out to the immediate neighboring property with emails and certified files. Steph personally hasn't heard any questions or concerns from the immediate neighbor, neighbors so far. So with all the information above, staff recommend the design review commission approve the design review application at SC 21-0030, subject to the district finding. And staff has concluded the presentation and open for questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That's a very extensive report. So with that, back to the commission. Michael, questions for staff?
No, I don't have any question.
Thank you. Sam, questions?
No questions.
Thank you, Jude?
No questions.
Well, that's pretty easy. Thank you. Frank has no questions either. So that's a very good report. Not a lot of questions needed. Okay, over to the owner and architect. Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Just a very brief introduction of myself. My name is Francis. I'm the designer for this project. Unfortunately, my client, Miss Jenny Song, cannot make it to this meeting due to very good news for her eldest son being accepted to a college that he was applying for. So they're out celebrating for that occasion. Hopefully, I can present her her concerns and represent her well. I'll be happy to answer. It's been a process with the finance staff. And with their direction, we were able to develop this design that hopefully will meet or then exceed the city's standards for this neighborhood.
Frank, you there?
I am. I'm just wasn't sure if he had completed. Are you finished?
Ah, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, thank you for that. All right, back to Sean. Any questions or comments here from the, the public on this project?
No, we do not have any members of the public requesting to speak tonight for this item.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Then we'll close the public comment section for Holt Avenue and open it for the commission discussion. So Jude, do you want to open up the discussion here, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, interesting lot. I think we've seen some other lots that but the easement and right away there. And clearly, privacy impact is limited to the adjacent neighbor on, to the right and very limited to behind. So I think the design as is, as is, meets the intent of the design guidelines specifically in that respect, in terms of privacy. In terms of bulk and mass. In terms of bulk and mass, you know, just to be consistent here, it has a nine-foot first floor plate height. I would, it does look a little top-heavy in its current design. So I would suggest reducing the second-story plate to eight foot six. Then it's inconsistent with other homes we've approved over the years. Just personally, I'm not convinced that the front entry portico is quite there. I mean, it's a beautiful handsome home, but that to me is the weakest length, link. But I will leave that up to the designer to maybe work on that issue. But regardless, I'm in support of the project as designed with the modification of the plate height at the second story.
Okay, all right, Jude, thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I agree with Jude, particularly on the entrance. It, just looking at it again, it, it's, it's not confirming, even though there were some pillars there. I think they could do more to make the entrance a little more attractive. Other than that, I think it's a, it's a beautiful design. And I'm just also a little worried being that close to the creek that probably hasn't flowed for four or five years. But may have a new test as we're going forward, as we've learned. So I understand that's something that really isn't in our ability to discuss. That's all done through the various other agencies, I guess. So no more questions.
Okay, I thank, thanks, Sam. Michael?
Yeah, yeah, the same, you know, pretty much the same comments and, you know, some, it's a nice design. But the, you know, some of the detail need to be kind of, you know, think through. Out of the porch, I think the, the window, the window header. You know, something that's a very similar color or you want to think of something contrast color. You know, is it meaning, does it, you know, all the window head, does it need to be there? I mean, it's not a big deal, but I just wanted, you know, you to think through. The other one is the same, you know, question about the window. The window material need to be more specific. You show Anderson window. But under, we are concerned about the outside. Is it really window on the outside or you talking about window on the inside and then some kind of other material on the outside? That should be clarified. Other than that, I mean, favor of this, this project.
Thank you. Okay, all right, thanks, Michael. Frank's thoughts on this are, we've seen a number of these more modern farmhouses come in front of us. You know, over, over the last years. And again, I would reflect back to the architect to maybe take a look around town at some of the details on some of the other homes that had been built. And I think this is a fine project. I think you could make it that much better. If you just did somewhat study what has been done in Los Altos. The front, front porch is a good example where I think improvements could be made. But it's nothing that I would hold up for, you know, approving. But again, I think there are, there are just details that could be, make it even better than it is, is what I would say. So with that, I guess we're, we're leaning in favor of moving forward on the project. With the exception of the plate height that Jude had pointed out, which does seem like a reasonable change to just keep it in line with all of the other projects that have been in front of us. So with maybe that one detail, would someone like to make a motion to try to move this forward?
Okay, I'll try to do that. I move that to approve SC twenty-one dash zero zero three zero. At seventeen thirty, Holt Avenue. By accepting all that condition and finding and lower the second floor plate height to eight foot six. Per the design guideline.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll, we'll call the role on the project. Jude?
I.
Sam?
I.
Thank you. Michael?
Hi.
Thank you. Frank is an I also. So congratulations, project approved this evening and best of luck with the new home.
Chair, Chair Bishop, can I, who is, can I obtain the second? Who was the second on that motion?
Harding, Sam.
Harding, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, I believe, yeah, I believe it was Sam. Thanks, Sean. Okay, so that concludes the section as far as the discussion for this evening. And we'll move into commissioners' reports and comments. Do we have anything to discuss as a team this evening? Jude?
Well, I just mentioned to Sean that it would be good to, in the public notification section, to include the conflict of interest provision there. It was mentioned on one item. The first item, I was curious whether I was conflicted out and it was clarified, but that section didn't exist. So I, I would ask staff to add that to all future reports, whether there is a conflict or not.
So you'd like them to define in the report, one of our names if there's a conflict, is that correct?
Yeah, so per the, and maybe most don't know, there's a map on each of us. For what, where we live and what, there's a big circle around it to what projects we would have a conflict of interest due to Form 700 that we fill out on a yearly basis. So anyhow, it was mentioned on one staff report, but it was not mentioned on the other two. So I would just like to see staff include that paragraph in each staff report going forward.
I think that's a reasonable request, yeah.
To the chair, we can make sure, we can make sure to add that to future reports for you. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. I appreciate that too. I've had my questions over the years on that topic. All right, Sam, anything for us?
Yeah, I just wanted to raise this again about the ADU's services and the connecting connections. Reason is in our neighborhood, we've had two ADUs go in where the neighbors don't seem to know whether they are allowed to connect. In one case to a, the street cul-de-sac that only has buildings on one side. That they may have connected things to that particular roadway. And neighbors were just nervous about that because they also were concerned if they're allowed to do that. Or they also allowed to put a gate in that would be specifically for the ADU on a rear entrance. So I didn't have any answers for him because I, I said, you know, we don't really have any basis in discussing that. And is, are those questions part of the oversight in the department?
So I can, if the chair would like me to, I can answer that. So, so when we do review projects, one of the first steps in reviewing an ADU or any application is to look at the track maps. And we look at adjoining track maps. Many times what we find on adjoining subdivisions or adjoining cul-de-sacs is restrictions typically on the ability to utilize that access to the adjoining property. So we do look for that in the track maps to see if there's any easements or constraints that would prevent it. The specific ADU regulations do not constrain that, but we do look to try to prevent it if the track maps don't allow it. And we've had, I've had at least one instance where we found a constraint based on a track map. And so we do check that every project.
Okay.
Sean, can I add something there?
Yes.
Mary Nander here, and this actually came up again last night when we were just looking at the SB nine design guidelines. And specifically, the issue was if that adjoining, I'm going to call it to the rear street is narrow and is otherwise constrained for things like fire and so on. Can we basically prevent there being a rear access? And we ended up putting that question into what we called the phase two part of the SB nine regulations. You all know that you've been working and helping, a couple of you especially with the, the basic SB nine design guidelines. But we have a phase two where we're going to be doing some more detailed work. And that's one of the issues that we're going to address, not just for SB nine, but potentially for these other ADU questions, I think as well. So, sorry, we don't have, you know, super, super answers. Obviously, if there's a specific constraint with turnaround area for fire truck and so on. There'd be some, some restrictions on being able to have access or parking or whatever. But we, we don't have that well handled. We all kind of agreed with that last night.
Thank you.
You. Michael?
No, I don't have anything. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Frank, along the lines of SB eight-nine. When I spoke to Sean earlier today, I heard that there was a draft that has been through council. And I had asked if we could see that as commissioners. So again, if there's a way to share information earlier with us, if that's appropriate, I think we would all appreciate that. And Sean said he would get back to me on that particular item. Sean, any update on that?
Commissioner, Associate Planner Ja, who's managed the, managed that project, could probably speak to that.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Bishop, that last night, council approved the document of the SB nine phase one, single-family objective standard. And Steph is cleaning up the, the modified documents and will send it to the city clerk for the signature. After receiving the signature, we will post it on the website. And if, if there's demand, we can also bring a brief training possibly back to the design review commission.
Okay, that's true. That would be great. We don't always see everything that gets posted to websites, so if there's a way it could be emailed to us, at least to me, I assume others would like it too. I would certainly appreciate that.
Like that, I mean, we're the ones that are supposed to interpret these things. It would nice, nice to know what they are and what the limits and our, our issues might be. So very much so.
Actually, you won't be interpreting them. The staff will be interpreting them. So these particular guidelines actually will not be under your purview. Even though you've made invaluable contributions to them. And we're hoping in the future that you might have something to do with them. But for now, SB nine projects will be looked at exclusively by staff. But I think it is important to know what's there. And one of the things we talked about last night was a need to look at our other design guidelines, the ones you've been applying all this time. And see whether we want to, in a couple of cases, kind of normalize things between the two sets of guidelines. And one particular example of that was the colors issue. And if we were, so for now, just so you know, council by majority vote, not by unanimous vote. Removed the color limitations that were in the draft version for the SB nine guidelines. But put that in a phase two consideration, also to be included in looking back at the generalized design guidelines.
So maybe I could rephrase what Sam tried to say, which is whether we're interpreting or not. We don't always see what gets posted to the website. And if the design review commission will continue into the future, it would be great if we could be mailed documents as they're created and available.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That was my question. Okay.
And I was gonna.
Potential future. I'm just, please proceed.
When you're all done, I have something to say way, way at the end, Chair.
I, I have one additional item, Frank.
Sure.
I had a question, question for Sean.
Let's take them one, let's take them one at a time. So back, this was the commissioners' reports and comments section. I was going to move to potential future agenda items, but Sean, did you have one more thing to add here?
No, I did not. I, we did have the interim community development director here and I was hoping to introduce her at the end, but I think she had to move on. So I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to introduce her. But it was Laura Simpson. She, she had joined the meeting. So I, hopefully she'll join a future meeting. We can introduce her to you.
Thank you. Okay. So I think all the commissioners spoke, so we'd go on to future agenda items. Did anyone who's on the call have, did anyone, did anyone who's on? Okay, go ahead.
I thought Jude had a question.
I had a question regarding the, I don't know whether it was a spam email or what. But do we all have City of Los Altos DRC email addresses now? And if so, do we have to establish a password?
I don't think so. I think that was spam. No one's given me a mail account. I had my discussion with the city attorney over that two weeks ago, but no one's ever responded to me about one being created. So does any, that's a good question. Does anyone have an update? Or is that just nonsense? People were trying to get information out of us.
So that was a phishing attempt. The same thing was sent to the historical commission. And so I had sent out an email to the historical commissioners not to respond and to forward that email to our IT department, if you can. So that they can review it and make sure to prevent that from happening again.
I'm not sure I saw your email on that. Anybody else see that email from Sean?
No, I, I sent it to historical. I, I just stepped into the position of helping with liaison, so.
We have not, we have not seen that. We've not seen that. I believe we were trying to be phished. Hopefully, no one did respond to that. And then I had the second question and it had to do with people, the city being able to access my personal email, which I still disagree with. But I still gave the emails over to the city attorney. I suggested that if we're going to do business with the public, that we be given email accounts. And I have not heard back on that. So I don't know if there's an update on that or not. And any thoughts? Would you guys want to have an email account to the city?
No.
Interesting, okay. Realize they have, they have, they have access to your other email if you don't have one.
Chair Bishop, can I, can I ask you about access to email? I provide some, at the time, I know that they, they heard the request. But what exactly access to the email to what extent?
So let me tell you what, I don't know all the rules and regulations, but again, as an individual, I'm not speaking as a member of this team, really. But I consider my email to be private. And I had a correspondence with someone of the public because I don't have a city mail, email account. They had my email account. They wrote me and I wrote back to them. So they asked me to disclose that, which I did. And I said, well, I'll do it now, but in the future, I would like to have, if you expect me to correspond with people in the public, I would like to have a city account. And I've not heard back on that. So I was unaware that they could actually ask us for emails that we have within our personal accounts if it had to do with city business. And they cited a case with the city of San Jose, which I disagreed with the case as an individual. Because that individual was given an email account from the city of San Jose, where we have not. But I still complied. There's a, there's a good citizen here, but I still struggle with it, quite honestly, as an individual. So that, that's all I know about it.
Chair Bishop, are you talking about full access or, I mean, all I provided?
No, no, no. It's just. I only gave them, yeah, I only gave them.
Email related, yeah, yeah, okay.
Email related to a particular individual on a particular topic, correct?
Okay, okay, okay. That's, that's per my understanding. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, right.
Okay, all right.
So that's a question. I opened that question with the city attorney. And she said she would review it with the powers to be and come back to us with a decision, what was possible and what was not. So, but I have not heard back. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Where were we? I'm trying to think here. I think the mayor had something to say, right?
When you're all done.
Yeah, go ahead. Why don't we turn it over to you?
Can I, can I, for potential future agenda items, so we close out the engine? So we do have agenda items for the January fifth meeting. Will we have a quorum for the January fifth meeting? It is after the holidays.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Sorry.
So did everyone give an eye that they were available on January fifth?
Yes.
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 Sam? Okay. Sam? Okay, and I can try to be, so, yeah. Okay, and David, you'll have to ask him offline.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so Mayor?
So I just wanted to reinforce what was said earlier that the council did approve last night the design guidelines in three appendices. And I want to thank all of you for your help with putting those together. I know we had a couple folks working very closely with Ja on on that document. It came together very nicely. It does not have the level of detail that some cities have, but you know, some cities have staffs that are four or five times as big as ours. So I think we did a a great job pulling that together quickly, and I hope you'll see it soon. We do have a number of things which I know she will share with you as phase two, so that it was moved forward, trying to refine the document, refine the the standards, that we can do that, make them even better than what they are now. But really important that you understand the interpretation that the city attorney recommended, and it's always hard as a council to go contrary to your city attorney, that until there is further clarification from the either HCD or clarifying legislation or whatever, that someone who is doing a scrape and replace single family home, even if it does not have an ADU, can choose to call it an SB nine project, and it would be considered ministerially. And even if it's a two-story, it would be considered ministerially. They can also choose to have it go through a discretionary process, which means it would still come back to you guys. Anything that is a remodel, but not what would be considered basically a rebuild that that makes an equivalent to a a new a new construction, and that's all defined in the document, as you'll see when you read it. Those that that are remodels that are two stories would also still come to you. And any discretionary project that involved a second story would would come to you. So we don't know where this is going to shake out. We don't know when we'll get clarification that might change that or an interpretation. I can tell you, we are the only city in the valley, as far as I know, who are taking that interpretation. Many cities are taking the interpretation that unless you are replacing the the home with at least another home with an ADU or a JDU, then just to scrape and replace one single family home for one single family home, they're saying cannot be SB nine, which is very different from what our city attorney is saying. So, you know, it's it's very confusing. The the bill was poorly written. Everybody agrees to that. So we're in flux, and we appreciate your flexibility as we kind of navigate our way through what SB nine is is going to do. The other thing I I would say is that I have enjoyed being here with you guys for the last year. We do rotate the council liaisons once a year. They, sometimes they change, sometimes they don't. In this case, I will be saying goodbye to you, and you will get a former colleague back, and that is Vice Mayor Sally Meadows, who served on this design review commission some years ago, prior to her being on the planning commission. It will be here as your council liaison. And Sean already mentioned that we do have an interim planning manager who was here earlier. And she's great. I've talked with her, and so she'll she'll be available to you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might want to ask of me before I say goodbye. But I want to thank you for, seriously, everything you've done and continue to do to try and help us maintain the quality of construction and the and the character of our town. I think most people have no idea how much you matter to the city.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the mayor? I know I have one. So Jude?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Sam?
No, no questions. Good luck.
Thanks.
Michael?
No question. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so my question is, there's quite a shakeup in the staff and reporting structure in the city. So Guido is gone. I'm trying to think of the other fellow's name. Yeah, gone.
Retiring as of the end of this month, yes.
Yes, yes. And Steve is on holiday for a month. And we've been working and, you know, Sean's a great, great person, has been working with us to kind of carry the torch forward. Any any thoughts for us, how this will play out and how this will all fit together for us?
Well, I don't think it's a secret that both Sean and Steve have stepped up in positions. Right, Sean? This isn't a secret, is it?
We haven't been told.
Yeah, I don't think I've advised. I mean, I.
Why don't you say your thing about what happened to you?
Oh, okay. I I was promoted to the position of senior planner and I I by the city manager and and the community development director, Sean Bix, which I appreciate.
That's no reflection, that's, that's no reflection of age, is it, Sean?
Yeah, I know, like right here. Maybe.
Well done.
And Steve Golden is has is the, I'm going to mess this up, Sean. He is an interim planning manager, if I got that right, or interim senior planner?
Interim, interim planning services manager.
Planning services manager, thank you. So and then we have the the person who was on earlier that couldn't stay on, Laura Simpson, who is going to be that essentially an acting, in an acting position. She is, I believe, a retired planning director, and she's come back to serve in this in an interim position for now. And the building department, and this is what you may not know, the building department has been reassigned over to the engineering division, so that the folks who are doing inspections, or I believe, last I knew, is reporting to the engineering division. Have I got that right, Sean?
Correct.
Okay. Have I missed anything else in terms of organizational rearrangements?
You probably have never met one of the building inspectors, Veronica Tanaco. She became the interim building chief. And so you may have not have ever interacted with her, but Mike, Commissioner Ma, Commissioner Carrick may interact with her since they do have projects in the city typically.
Yeah, and she's been with the city for a long time. I actually talked with her last week. But again, she's, that group is now over in the engineering department, rather than being in the community development department. And of course, we have Ja. And do we have any other new planners? Is there somebody else I've missed? I think we've got one more, right?
Nas Healy. And then we have brought on, I believe, Metropolitan Planning Group. We have a senior planner that'll be starting, I think may have started already, and so we do have some projects being reassigned to them.
Yeah, that's a, that's a contract, that's a contracted out arrangement. So I think maybe at the next meeting, Laura, we could probably, we could ask Laura to explain to you guys kind of what the structure is and where the workflow is going and and all that kind of thing. Because now when projects come in, there are people are going to be asked, you know, do you want this to flow as a SB nine project? And they'll have to, you know, write down whether they want it that way or not. And then it'll go according to what the rules are. So it's going to be a little different.
Question, when did Guido depart?
Guido's last day, I think, was the seventh or the ninth or something like that.
December ninth, yes.
Something like that. So like last week was his last day, and he went to be the planning director, community development director, I'm not sure which, for the city of Marina.
So and if, and for this period until, since Guido's left until Steve's returns, I am working with other planners and providing like general oversight.
Like three halves right now.
And I may potentially take over as the liaison for design review commission and potentially Ja and Nas may take over historical, but that's in flux right now.
Right.
Well, good to have you still with us. We like consistency.
Yes.
We know that.
Okay, well, thank you for the updates, everyone, and congratulations to the mayor in your new position.
Thank you.
Yep. Are there any other items for tonight, or shall I move to adjournment?
I think you could probably move to adjournment. Sean, can you stay on? Are you in control? Are you host of the meeting?
Yes, I am. I am hosting the meeting.
If you can stay on, I'd like two minutes of your time, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so we're we're going to leave you as well. Adjourn the meeting. It's nine oh one. Thank you. Have a happy.